So I'm gonna stand here and then Miss Povinelli will be right sort of queue and I'll look at Miss Povinelli and then just. Good, how are you doing? Hi, you're my first graders.
There.
They're gonna be leading the slute, flag slute, and then share with us what they've learned about mindfulness and the brain.
And then you'll help us.
Yes, I will. And Mrs. Povinelli will help us too.
Well.
Yes.
So Miss Povinelli should be in photo as well.
That's right. (laughing).
Cause I don't.
All right, at seven o'clock on the dot, we will adjourn the Board of Education closed session and reconvene the Board of Education open session meeting, recognizing that this is Red Rib- Ribbon Week. We so appreciate all the involvement in our Red Ribbon Week this, uh, they're laughing at me because I stumble over that every time, Red Ribbon Week. It's, it's a very important weekend and we designate one week a year to recognize how important it is for our students to make good decisions, to avoid risky behavior, and to be aware of their health and the needs of that. So we've had some wonderful participation in, in all of our schools this week. PTAs have stepped up and done a fantastic job, so in recognition of all that's going on for Red Ribbon Week. Thank you. All right. Now we'll have our wonderful Wild Rose. Nope, Brad Oaks tonight. Yeah, I see Janie out there now. Uh, Brad Oaks, come forth and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Right, well, good evening, Board President Gilliland and members of the board, Dr. Trozian and cabinet members. As you know, I'm Janie Nichols and I am the proud principal of Brad Oaks Elementary. With me tonight are first grade students from Mrs. Povinelli's class. They will be leading the pledge of allegiance and then afterwards, they would like to share with you all what they have learned about mindfulness and the brain. Mrs. Povinelli?
Please stand. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emma, can you share with us why we've learned about the brain?
We are learning about the brain so that we know that the brain can change with practice.
Can you tell us, Carissa, something about the cerebrum?
The cerebrum has two hemispheres, left and right.
Joseph, will you share another fact about the cerebrum?
The cere- the cerebrum is responsible for thinking.
Viani, will you share us something about the cerebellum?
The cerebellum helps you with complicated tasks like riding a bike.
Valia, will you also share about the cerebellum?
The cerebellum is the size of a golf ball.
Liam, will you teach us a fact about the brain stem?
The brain stem, the brain stem sends messages.
Saad, will you share about the brain stem?
The brain stem keeps you alive by heart breathing and lungs breathing.
Did you know that we are going to have our fall festival this Friday? Please come and join the fun. It starts at six o'clock. On Halloween, we are, we have something fun happening that I want to share with you. We will be dropping pumpkins from the ladder of a fire truck and each grade level is making a produc- prediction. You can come join us if you want.
Thank you.
Right, flip this way, one. One, two, three, one, two. One more, over here. One, two.
Heather, you are extra- Heather, Heather, you're extraordinary.
All right, thank you so much. I just, uh, I just love when we have the elementary students so articulate and so cute and we're just so proud of them when they come and help us with our meeting. All right, roll call will show that everyone is here except for Brian Long, who was excused this evening. In the closed session, we discussed several personnel issues and closed session items and we took no formal action in that meeting. Order of business, I know we're pulling agenda item I six on the, the board policy and AR on discipline. Uh, we've got two other items we're going to move up in the agenda. So that's some folks that are here with us can get their business done. One is J five, the reappointment of Jeanne Tyler. We'll move that up to follow public comment. And J two, authorizing the district to contract with Alliance of School Cooperative Insurance Programs. And that will follow the reappointment of Jeanne Tyler, so. Are there any other changes to our order of business tonight? All right, moving on to the minutes of the Board of Education meeting October ninth, could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Wait.
No.
So moved.
You, you can do it. Yeah, that's.
So moved.
Yeah, you can do it.
Anyone can do it.
Yeah, anybody can do it.
I mean, you don't have to be here to approve the minutes.
Cause watch what happens.
So we have Marissa moving and Celine seconding. All right, any discussion before we take the vote? This is how please take the vote.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Trevanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Abstain.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries three wine.
All right, moving on to board member reports. Do you have a report tonight?
Why are you looking at me?
Cause you always have a report.
I don't have any report.
Oh, hey, this is a first. You're, you're saying a first for this board.
I don't have anything to say right now.
All right, then, we'll move on to our student board member report.
Good evening, President Gilliland, members of the board, Dr. Thorson, members of cabinet, friends and families of the Monrovia community. I am pleased to report that we started our second semester of the first term on Monday. Our attendance has improved so far as we continue to encourage our classmates to take advantage, advantage of the opportunities our schools have to offer, namely recovering credits and preparing for college and careers. Tomorrow morning, we will play our last football game of the season at the Covina Valley District Field. Our boys who are currently undefeated will be playing for the San Gabriel Valley Continuation League Championship against Fair Valley High School. Good luck to our boys. As also, Mr. Tiddies Ross is going to be recognized at the teacher appreciation night at the Los Angeles Clippers game on Monday, November eighteenth. He will be part of an encore teacher appreciation presentation before the teams warm up that evening. We look forward to joining him as he honored one of our best Monrovia Unified School District educators. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. We appreciate that report and appreciate your representation of Canyon Oaks High School. Uh, I don't know if anybody saw as I came in that I'm wearing a football tie. This is a great week for this district. You just heard, we're, we're getting ready to win the continuation league football championship. And if things go right on Friday night, which every expectation is, we'll also win the Rio Honda League in the, in the regular high school, so. Great things are happening in our sports program, in our football program, but in all of our sports programs. All right, report from our superintendent, Dr. Therosian.
I'd like to begin with the, uh, with the late start bill. This is, uh, to go into effect in twenty twenty-two where, uh, schools, this is at the middle school and high school level, uh, schools would, uh, begin no earlier than eight o'clock at the middle school level and no earlier than eight thirty at the high school level. We as a district will need to transition over in the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, school year. Before we get there, we will do some research, look at some transitions and look at, uh, solicit some feedback and input from our community to try and figure out what would be the best way to, to make this as seamless as possible. Uh, we don't have to wait till twenty twenty-two though, to remind, uh, our parents and our students to, that they should get a good night's sleep, uh, before coming to school because we want students to be awake and alert. And, uh, they can begin that process now. I am also delighted to announce that, uh, we have been selected for a golden bell. This is our eighteenth golden bell as a district and it is for our early college program. The golden bell is a designation by the California School Boards Association for innovative programs and our early college program has, has become the model program really in the state. And so I'm very excited about that and about a very well deserved recognition. It's a lot of good work by a lot of good people in this district and with our excellent partners from Citrus College. We also, last week, for those of you, um, who are able to join us, thank you for joining us. Uh, for those of you who are unable to, we have just a snippet of a video that we crafted to give a sense of what our schools and our district offers. And so I think that's about to play now.
Monrovia Unified's mission focuses on providing world-class schools for world-class students. Students who attend our school engage in meaningful learning while in a safe and nurturing environment. Monrovia Unified offers elementary school enrichment programs such as dual-language immersion in Mandarin and Spanish, coding, robotics, music, theater, art, and dance. Dual-language immersion strengthens cognitive skills in our students, enhancing critical thinking, creativity, and problem solving.
我是未来的科学家。
我是未来。
I am the future.
你是未来。
I am the future.
我是Monrovia，永远不变。
Our coding and robotics programs allow our students to move from being consumers of technology to being the creators of technology. Our visual and performing arts programs, which include vocal and instrumental music, dance, theater, and art, allow students to explore their creativity and discover their passions. Our college-going culture really takes off in middle school. Students have an opportunity to take advantage of programs such as PPIS, STEAM, athletics, robotics, the arts, and so much more.
I am a future anthropologist.
I am a future anthropologist.
I am a future marine biologist.
I'm a future English or history teacher.
STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, unleashes our students' creativity, especially with coding and robotics. Additionally, through Chromebook instruction, students create, collaborate, develop, communicate, and interact online. Our high school's rigorous academic program incorporates real-world experiences for both college and career-bound students. Our strong athletic programs teaches our students how to balance their competitive drive with character and individual determination with team dynamics.
I'm a future engineer.
I am a future physician.
There are many enrichment programs at the high school level, such as career technical education courses, early college program, ABA, academies such as humanities and math and science, theater, music, art, dance, and robotics.
I'm a future international business associate.
I am a future entrepreneur. From elementary to high school, our students are provided with a rigorous curriculum, extracurricular opportunities, and enrichment programs that propel them toward academic success at Monrovia Unified at college, in their careers, and beyond.
And it is appropriate to just say thank you for supporting our schools because we have so much to offer and much of it is as a result of so many of our partnerships with our community. So thank you for supporting our schools. For those of you who were able to join us on Wednesday evening, if you would contribute to the thought exchange and provide us with your feedback, it will only help us get better. And that's really what we want. Your feedback matters. And that concludes my report. Mr. Gilliland?
Thank you, Dr. Therosian. And I would like to once again say thank you so much to Dr. Therosian and all the staff members and students that were involved in making the State of the Schools address such as success. A lot of hard work going into that, and all of our feedback has been how much this community appreciated at State of the Schools. And also for those that worked on this short film we just looked at, and they did a great job on that. So thank you so much for that. All right, we'll move on to public comments. The Board of Education encourages public participation and invites you to share your thoughts on school businesses. It's part of what we're all about as a board, is getting that input. So we appreciate those of you that share with us. If you haven't and you would like to address the board, we would ask you to fill out a comment form and give it to Ms. Huff, and she'll make sure we're aware that you do have a comment to make. First, we'll have public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any comment cards?
There are none.
All right, then we'll move on to public comments for items on the open session agenda, and those comments can be made now or when the agenda item comes up. Do we have any cards?
There are none.
No comments tonight, all right. Then, as promised, we will move up two items. First is J five, the appointment of Jeannie Tyler to the, excuse me, reappointment of Jeannie Tyler to the Personnel Commission. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, Senator, Board President Gilliland, members of the board, Dr. Therosian, cabinet and members of the community. The Board of Education is requested to hold a public hearing regarding the reappointment of Ms. Jeannie Tyler, CSEA's appointee to the Personnel Commission. Just a little bit of background and history on Ms. Tyler. She has served as CSEA's appointee to the Personnel Commission since December 1st, 2001. The current term of office expires on December 1st, 2019, and Ms. Tyler has so indicated a willingness to serve another term. You have not changed your mind?
Uh, I didn't change my mind.
Okay. That's a good thing, because on September 5th, 2019, CSEA announced its intention to reappoint her. The public hearing must be held at a board meeting after 30 and within 45 days of the board's public announcement of the classified employees' organizations nominee and shall provide the public employee, the public employees, the board, and commission an opportunity to express their views on the qualifications of the appointee. And I'd like to take a moment as the secretary to the Personnel Commission just to say a few words on behalf of Ms. Jeannie Tyler. She has maintained an excellent rapport with the association members and visits campuses annually. She avails herself to the membership to address issues in addition to celebrating successes. But above all else, Jeannie has served this district with compassionate kindness and care. And it is for these reasons and many more that at the close of this public hearing, the board is requested to appoint, reappoint Ms. Tyler to the Personnel Commission for a three-year term beginning December 1st, 2019.
All right, and with that, I would like to open the public hearing regarding this reappointment. Do we have any comments, questions? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing, and I would take a motion to reappoint Ms. Tyler.
Move to reappoint.
Second.
All right, Ms. Huff, would you take the vote?
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes, absolutely. Ms. Tyler has just done a stalwart job of helping us with our Personnel Commission. And I believe, Jeannie, you've been on this Personnel Commission longer than I've been on the board, so, yep, she is one of our people that we can count on to always be there and do the right thing. Welcome back to the Personnel Commission. All right, great, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to J two, and thank you for being here tonight, by the way.
Always.
Always is right. You're with us in spirit always. You know, we would love to hear a few comments from you if you want to make some comments. Oh, now, see, now she got all tongue tied.
I'm never tongue tied.
Okay, okay.
I was not expecting to speak tonight.
Okay.
It's been a pleasure.
All right, good, thanks again, Jeannie. All right, moving on to item two, authorizing the district to contract with Alliance of Schools for Cooperative Insurance Programs. Ms. Wu?
Yes, good evening, President Gilliland, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Therosian, Cabinet, Staff. And at the last board meeting, the board authorized the district to negotiate and transfer the district Works Camp tier claim, which occurred prior to July 1st, 2018, because since July 1st, 2018, the district joined a new JPA, which is Aescape. So with an upper firm premium, the district will transfer the four twenty claims to another party. As a result, it will reduce the district risk, remove any future liabilities, as well as administrative costs associated with this claim management. Since then, we have worked with the Aescape to solicit a third party who is willing to take this outstanding claim, and we received three proposals. First proposal is from the Safety National. The Safety National is an admitted license insurance company in the state of California who currently provides access courage to Aescape Works Camp program. And Antex is a subsidiary of Afon Gallenger, the company who will reinsure this liability to other admitted and non-admitted reinsurers within or outside state of California. The third proposal is our Aescape members. So Board, I have this revision put on your desk, and in my update, the number is correct, but for whatever reason in your board package, it is the older version. So we, after talking to the Aescape last Friday, there are some changes. But Board, keep in this mind, the dollar amount here is still estimated. So most likely, I will receive more accurate number next week, so I will definitely put in my board update to keep you most updated information. So hopefully, that final number will be lower, the quote we currently have, but all this number definitely is lower compared with the reserve we receive from our old
So just to be clear, we're not taking money out of a general fund or anything to do this. This is money that was owed to the district under the old Joint Powers Authority, and it's money that was put in the reserve for us to cover these claims. And now, this cost of transferring this responsibility is within the amount that we received for that. So no money's coming out of general or other funds.
That's correct, President. The reason why we're doing this, as we all know, that healthcare costs will be increased every year, and there's a possibility, based on the employee injury in work situation, there's a possibility there will be additional claim, add-on exist claim. So by doing that, we actually protect additional costs, which impact the general fund if the future costs were exceeding the reserve we receive from our JPAs.
So we expect a positive effect on our general fund.
That's correct.
All right, any other questions? Could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. I love moving items on the agenda, then you have to flip back and forth between pages. All right, moving on to this page, California dashboard local indicators. Dr. Kaiser?
Thank you, Board President Gilliland and Board. I would like to invite Courtney Glass to come and join me. Tonight, we're going to give you a report of the 2019 California School Dashboard Local Indicators. There are ten indicators that the state asks us to report out publicly on our school success, and the state indicators have six, which are the high school graduation rate, academic performance, suspension rate, English language learner progress, preparation for college and career, and chronic absenteeism. These six indicators are reported on our dashboard, and tonight, we will not be addressing those. They have not come out publicly from the state yet. However, the remaining four indicators are local indicators, and one of the requirements that we're required to report out publicly is how we are doing on our four indicators that are local indicators, which are comprised of basic conditions, implementation of academic standards, school climate surveys, and parent involvement and engagement. These four indicators, Courtney Glass will be reviewing with you in some detail now.
Good evening, President Gilliland, board members, Dr. Therosian, cabinet, guests, thank you for being here. I'm very pleased to present this evening and to share with you and the public the California School Dashboard Local Indicators. Okay, so Dr. Kaiser just referenced, we have the eight state priorities. Alongside with, we have our five local indicators. The five local indicators as referenced, basic services, implementation of standards, parent-family engagement, school climate, and access to a broad course of study. So we're taking a look at our MUSD local indicators when the dashboard does go live in December. The blue, you see the blue indicators on those five. Those bands read standard met, and those represent the local indicators which we report on. The state indicators are the gauges which give us the different colors. Step back, sorry, okay, sorry. Priority one. Priority one is our Williams report, and this shows that we have 100% of our qualified teachers, we have all of our materials, and all of our facilities are considered clean and safe. Priority two is we are looking at the implementation of our state standards. We discussed this in both IL meetings and our Curriculum Instruction Assessment Advisory Team, and we reflected on the different levels of implementation that we've had. Priority three, parents discussed at our DAC meeting in this very room, our levels of implementation for our different family and parent engagement policies and practices at each school site. Priority six, we use the California Healthy Kids Survey to survey the students at seventh grade, ninth grade, and eleventh grade to gather data on connectedness and engagement. Priority seven, we look at enrollment and course offerings across our district based on what the ed code requires us to offer, and we are continually looking at enrollment, at success, at different categories and different assessments at the end of some of those programs, certifications, and ensuring that all students, every student, has the option and the opportunity to enroll in those programs. This process that we take in the fall becomes our jumping-off point for our LCAP review that we will be doing in the spring when we go to rewrite and revamp our LCAP for the next three years. Thank you. Questions, comments from everybody?
I have some questions. First, a comment, welcome.
Thank you.
Is this your first time there in this position?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It's scary, isn't it?
A little bit, intimidating.
You're doing great, thank you so much. I want to make sure that I don't throw you a curve, so, and if you're not sure, just that's okay.
Sounds good.
And we'll get it answered next time.
Absolutely.
Under basic services priority one, Williams settlement report results, it says qualified teachers. What qualifies as a qualified teacher?
So to be a qualified teacher, that means according to the state, you have all the appropriate credentials and certifications to be teaching. The students are in your class. That goes for EL students, students with IEPs, 504s, grade level, subject matter.
Great, thank you. Shafer, would you mind going to the one, two, to the third slide? That's six, so, no, it's the California School Dashboard. So, Mr. Glass, yes, thank you. You said that our current dashboard is not yet available, it will be around December. Is this last year's, yes, that's 2018, so that's last year's dashboard.
Correct.
When you present the dashboard information to us again, could you do a side-by-side, or is that something that you can do?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. So the state provided self-reflection tool, the self-reflection tool are the eight priorities that you listed in your second slide?
For our reflection purposes, we did the self-reflection on the second and third one.
Okay.
Are where we have state, the self-reflection. The first one is based on the Williams report. The number six is based on the California Healthy Kids Survey, and number seven is based on our enrollment and our open access policy.
Okay, thank you. Priority six, school climate, mentions a student survey. When and to whom was this student survey given? For example, was it all the students or just select groups of students?
The California Healthy Kids Survey is given in the spring. The California Healthy Kids Survey is given in the spring. We give it currently to seventh grade, ninth grade, and eleventh grade students annually. This past year, we had between 85 to 90% of each of those grade levels turn in their surveys.
Awesome, thank you. Would you mind going to slide number eight, which is access to board course of study, priority seven? So access to broad course of study, priority seven, broad course of study as defined by California ed code. And I know there are thousands of California ed codes. I just wanted to point out to anyone that might be interested in finding out more about what exactly that education code is, you can always Google it, or you can go to ledgeinfo.legislature.ca.gov. There's a lot of information there, but anyone who's interested can go there to find out more about the ed code. Thank you so much for your report, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple things. As a newbie board member, kind of want a little more explanation, if you could, just a summary of what the Williams settlement report is. Can you define that?
I'll give it a shot. There might be people with more expertise than sitting around me.
I'd be happy to chime in. The Williams settlement report, the genesis of the Williams is there was a lawsuit against a school district that went up to the Supreme Court that became, that was the genesis of this law. There were schools that were not in good repair, and there were schools where they were sorely out of materials for students. And so with the genesis of that came the accounting for all of our materials, making sure that every child on a certain day in the school year, in the fall, eight weeks into school, has the assigned books that are required. And the county office sends out a team of people to check on schools that are selected in each district that are under the Williams. And only schools that had, in the days of the CST test, that had schools that were in the lower percentages on their achievement are checked on. And in those days, Monroe Elementary School in our district was one of our lower achieving elementary schools, so they have remained the target school for the Williams. They come and go through every classroom, they look at every child and every textbook every year as the sample. And then through ed services, we survey every school in our district, having our principals and their staff go and do a check in their school. And then they report by the eighth week of school whether or not we have sufficiency. And then that sufficiency report is given to the board, and there's a hearing, and then it goes on to consent. So that's the materials end. The other end of the Williams is the facility end. And that happens with Fernando through Connie's office, where the facilities have, there's a check, there are many checklists. And those schools, the schools are gone through, making sure that toilets are flushing, that there is adequate heating, that there aren't tiles missing or exposed asbestos, things that are hazardous to children. They also look for chemicals under sinks, making sure that teachers are not storing illegal chemicals like ammonia or some cleaning supply that they may have picked up at the grocery store, that those things are not in our classrooms, that are not safe for children. So it's a very specific checklist that Fernando and the administrators go through every room, and they certify that our schools are safe.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for that explanation. I know I kind of threw you a curveball on the-
I think the public may not know, be aware, so that's good.
I think that was important, thank you for that. And the other thing, I just wanted to be clear on the local indicators, that's either a not met or met. There is no exceeding the standard or anything, it's met. Okay, so I just want to make sure that the public was aware of that as well. So we have met all our local indicators. Great, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you so much, appreciate all the work that went into this report and-
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item two, Monrovia Community Adult School Update. Mr. Ferdic.
Greetings, President Gilliland, members of the board, Dr. Trocey and cabinet. If I tear up during the report, it's because I love this program and because my back is in severe pain. I'm making funny motions, not in any way to be disrespectful, because truly, it hurts that bad. Excited to give tonight's update, though, on our Monrovia Adult School. We're going to go over a couple things that are pretty simple, but I think are important to do annually, because it changes so consistently now in the state of California, what we're expected to do, how we're funded, it's just in constant flux. And I want to commemorate both our board and our cabinet for always being on top of it. We are ahead of things in Monrovia when it comes to understanding adult school. We can always find the resources and help we need, because you folks are informed, and we want to make sure that you know that that's appreciated. Overview for tonight, we're going to talk about our funding sources and our expenditures. We want to talk about our consortium. Just to remember, our consortium is the five adult schools in this area, as well as Citrus College. We want to talk about our student demographics and performance data that we have, our AJCC funding, the American Job Center funding through the WHOA Act, and the marketing that we are doing to make sure that we maximize our opportunities here in this district for that funding. The projected funding sources for the 1920 overview?
You put there a silver player.
Oh, so it is. Our California Adult Education Program, we call it now CAPE funds. It is not a block grant anymore, though it's very similar in its nature, is $1,415,234. That is still the majority of the funding that we receive at the adult school. That is to fund our three main programs, ESL, our academics, and of course, our biggest one, CTE, the Career Technical Training that we provide to our communities to get people jobs. Our district allocation is $250,000. It used to be a little bigger, but now it's $250,000, and we're grateful for it. We have a Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act that we grant, that we write every year. We are down in that number, about $75,000, about $100,000, isn't it down? $80,000 from last year. So that was a reduction that we had to make up in other ways, and had to get very creative in order to keep people employed and programs running. Our CalWorks grant, through no fault of our own, just because of the money that was available at the state, also declined to $38,000. So that was about a $60,000 decline. We brought in fees to the amount of 300 and close to 350,000 last year. We estimate about 300,000 going forward, just based on where we're at and the marketing that we've been able to do. We also have a reserve of 200,000 for a total budget there of 202,267,505. Our Citrus College Consortium update, we just finished our three-year plan. Thank you. That's okay, glad you're here. Just finished our three-year plan. And we increased our student performance and persistence is one of the goals that we had to write to. We also want to create and implement our regional employment training plan to increase and leverage our funds across industries. This is important, and you'll notice there will be more and more MOUs coming from us to partners in our community. That's important, because we don't have enough funds or resources to do the proper job training that's necessary for us to place our citizens in the workforce. So we are constantly looking for partners, other schools, other institutes of higher education, other businesses that can complete that training so we can put our people into the workforce. We want to make sure that we create, implement, and fully utilize our regional advisory boards. We want people from industry to be advising us, because we don't know all the time what's necessary to get people jobs within certain industries. We want to make sure that we have experts in the room that can help us. The total funding for all of the six members of our consortium is $4,413,282. And we continue to provide administrative expertise with that consortium. Mr. Russell works closely with the state as well. That helps us to make sure that we are, I guess, well-known and able to work through those programs.
Is there somebody else we could put guys, our front man?
He's the guy right now.
Okay.
Hire someone, but. The demographic data is there. We think we're a somewhat accurate reflection of the communities that surround us. You can look at the data there. The programs that are to the right also reflect, I think, very well, the people that we serve. ABE is an acronym for Adult Basic Education. That's education lower than the high school level. ESL and ELL, of course, are English learners. Citizenship, people trying to be citizens. High school diploma, doing that. HSE, CTE, people that were trying to get jobs for. Workplace preparation, adults with disabilities, and then other programs. If the adults with disabilities percentage looks smaller, it's because our school doesn't serve those. We have other members of our consortium and other consortia around us that serve that population and who are funded to do so. Our student enrollment by city, we are not just Monrovia's adult school. We serve a footprint that really is the old MAD school district, as well as parts of the mountain areas. So it's interesting that we are able to provide services for more than just us. But when we looked at our enrollment by city, you will see that Monrovia, of course, is still the biggest group served, and the total percent of student population there, the total number of students, looking at 17, 18 enrollment, and then a side-by-side comparison with 18, 19 enrollment as well. Our student performance over three years, there is the number enrolled, and then there is number with gain. So we are held responsible to show that our students make a gain. That gain can be a level of ESL, that gain can be a job training certification that leads to employment, that gain can be an academic year, or a diploma in our high school diploma program, or that gain can be the successful completion of a high school equivalency test. So all of those gains are what we are measured by. In order for us to maintain the funding that we receive, we have to show gains. We don't always have the similar numbers that you might become accustomed to looking at high schools. So for example, at high school, we would want to see a graduation rate of, you know, 100% is what we want, but something very close to that. In the adult school, we get people across the entire spectrum of levels. We may have somebody who comes in with a second grade level, and it may take us quite a while to get them to that graduation rate. So bear that in mind as you look at the adult ed graduation rates which are coming up. Our CTE totals, we have initial enrollments in 1819, we had 319, for example, in 1718, 250. The people who completed a program, some people are still in their programs, but the people who actually completed are shown in a percentage. And then afterwards, the number of those people who are employed are shown in another percentage. Our employment percentage, the far right of that first CTE total, is very, very good. When people complete our programs, we get them hired. The reason we can say it's good, the reason we can brag about that, is we can look across at other people's data and see that they are not as successful at getting people jobs as we are. We're very proud of that opportunity here. I think Monrovia is a great area, because we're kind of a crossroads of so many industries, so many things, where we're really on the cutting edge and we're well-connected, thanks to, well, you guys and other people, the communities, and people who help us work with other politicians in other areas. People are aware of us, and they send people to us and make sure that we are continuing to be funded. High school diploma graduation rate, kind of told you about that. The number possibly of 1718, we had 91 students enrolled, 22 grads. In 1819, we actually had 194 students enrolled, and we produced 24 grads. Our high set pass rates, that's a high school equivalency exam. 2017, 18, you can see the pass rate possible. And our percentage, both of those went up from 1718 to 1819. AJCCs, through the WHOA Act, the Workforce Investment Act, there is funding that comes to the state that is distributed through AJCCs to help to fund people who are seeking education to get jobs. We reach out to those people in a big way, because we began to notice that our other funding sources were either staying stagnant or going down based on the state's economic obligations and the way they were distributing money. What we have done very well is we have grown the number of dollars that we're able to bring in. We had a plan a couple years ago that we brought to this board to do targeted marketing, where we were going to specifically look for people who qualified for this funding, advertise to them, and try to get them to our doorstep, because we knew we could get funding from the state for those people. In addition, we have people going out constantly to these AJCCs, meeting with them, exhorting them, finding ways that we can sell our product to them, so that we can continue to bring funding in. In 1617, you'll notice a total of $20,000 that we brought in through AJCCs. That was prior to the targeted marketing effort. In our first year in 1718, we brought in 159,000 through that effort.
Mr. Ferdic, as you go through those numbers, could you help us with the acronyms?
I'm sorry. Yes, each of those are AJCCs, and I'm going to defer to-
Starting with AJCC.
American Job Centers of California. The American Job Centers of California are the intermediaries who get the money from the state and then can pass it on to job trainers. I don't know what, who MCS-
Managed Care Solutions.
Managed Care Solutions, SASFA.
First of all, the board.
Yeah.
I don't think SASFA even means anything.
WPI.
Youth Policy Institute.
Thank you.
And CCD is Career something.
And WHOA is the Workforce Investment Innovation Act, which funds all of them. Did that help?
Yes.
Okay, so noticing the trends?
They're names, and that's how they're known in the-
The targeted marketing and our efforts reaching out have been very successful, so much so that even with the other funding sources going down, we haven't had to have any layoffs or reduction of program. That concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. Just so you know, I always talk the adult school up with friends who may have friends with needs of the program, so I know you're doing great things over there. Well, one thing that kind of stuck out in my head in the slide regarding student enrollment by city.
Yes.
The very first city is Arcadia, and I just noticed that there was a big drop from one year to another. Do you know what that was? Was it a change in a program? Did we drop something?
We know exactly what those drops are. No, they haven't. Honestly, when we looked at the different drops in the groups, we began to look and wonder what happened to a large percentage of our Asian population, and that specifically that came from that group. El Monte Rosemead had a similar drop, so did Baldwin Park. And so we talked about that at a director's breakfast, we all brought our data and tried to get to the bottom of it, where did they go? The bottom line is, you get a lot of immigrants, especially in certain groups, who right now are able to get jobs in our country regardless of their linguistic ability. In the past, when there were many, many higher unemployment, it maybe was, but now, you need workers. There's a funny little cartoon, I saw a political cartoon where there's like 20 hot dogs on the grill, and that's your workers, and then jobs are the four buns sitting on the side. There are, right now, almost every, I'm sorry, inverse that, almost everybody who wants a job can get one.
Okay.
And so the students who were coming to us to improve their lot or to try to get a job are finding success outside of needing to learn the language.
Hold on to that second, Connie? Can this be publicized in WeChat? Is that something that can be added?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. All right.
By publicizing, you mean the-
The adult school and the programs that you have.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we did adopt WeChat, which kind of focuses on the Asian community, so maybe we can help out some way, that way. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I only have one, and it's on the slide that had the number of students and what they were taking. And the question I have, there was 42 students seeking citizenship. Is that, yeah, it's backways. It's okay, there was 42, I wrote it down. You had 194 that were looking for high school diplomas. It's the 42 I want to ask a question about.
Yes, sir.
How many people over the last three years have we successfully completed their citizenship?
That's a great question, and we were asked that not too long ago. We actually, in the last three years, served over almost 200 people total. We looked at that, including this year, last year, and the year prior. Finding out if they actually completed is difficult. They don't take the test with us. And so we're preparing them, they're taking usually language with us and the citizenship preparation program. But we don't always get them to come back and say, yep, I passed, or no, I didn't. Sometimes they take that test and move on, and we don't see them again. So it's not like we get from the Department of, whatever it is that processes that, a feedback report. We do have some that come back, and we had our teacher Carol Burrell report that she was aware of about 19. So when we were asked that question, we said, we could say 19, but we think it's probably higher. We just don't know, to be honest. We looked and- We looked and tried to get back to them. It's hard to track a lot of our students, specifically the students who are immigrants, because they come to us, many times the phone numbers change, their addresses change as they're working through the system and getting done what they need to get done. But we feel like it's a successful program. We've had politicians come out and kind of think that it was good, but we really, and maybe it's something we need to work on, tracking them better, because we really weren't able to answer that question when we were addressed earlier with it.
Thank you.
That's the honest truth.
Other questions or comments? Thank you so much. You guys do such a great job over there. Thank your whole staff for us.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Furtig, I know we went through some really low times here in this district, and we're barely able to hang on to our adult ed program, and it certainly is a great asset for this district and for this community. So thanks for all the work you do over there.
Thank you.
Hope your back gets better.
Yes.
Slap him on the back for a job.
Yeah, pat him on the back for us. No, oh, wait. I'm being told no. All right, item three is two thousand nineteen, twenty Census Day Enrollment and Unduplicated Student Count Report. Who's doing this one? Ms. Wu?
Yes, good evening. Again, this, October second of this year is our Census Data Day, which mean that that day, the district enrollment will be become nineteen, twenty school year official enrollment. So on that day, five thousand four hundred seventeen, seven, five thousand four hundred seven students enroll in the Monrovia Unified School District from K to twelve. Compared with the last school year, which Census Data is total five thousand four hundred forty-two, we have twenty-five fewer students. So in the matrix on the lower bottom of this slide, we list a comparison from the regular education, we up six from regular education students. So alternative education program, we lost thirty students. And special education, we have less than ten students. And non-public school, we have one less students in rural non-public school. So although we have twenty-five few students, which mean that we're still in a decline enrollment, this will impact the funding we will receive from the state. But the new, good news is, when we have a less population from the special education program, which mean that we will save the cost in that group. So hopefully, that the saving from the decline population in special education will exceeding the revenue we are decline because of the less students. So on the other information is very important, is for the unduplicated students count, because under the new funding model, the local control funding formula, there's a piece of the supplemental concentration which Dr. Kaiser managed. And this funding is generated from the three population, which is the English language learner, homeless, and students eligible for free and a reduced meal program. So this year, the preliminary percentage is fifty-eight point seven one percent. What I mean preliminary is, we're still continue receiving the meal application, which is end of this month is the last day to count. So we were able to take rule regulation to allow us to, while after the district tried numerous time, and the district have a reasonable assumption that the students qualified the free reduced meal, but the district still have not received this application, the principal were able to fill the application on the student's behalf. So that was allowed by the rule regulation. So the initial percentage also showed that it is higher than last year, which is zero point six percent. So hopefully, the final number for this count will be increased so that the group of kids will generate more funding so we can spend on those group of students who generally is funding.
Go ahead, Ms.
I just wanted to explain for the community that might not understand what unduplicated students mean, and I know that's important and a little bit confusing, and I just wanted to explain further that what an unduplicated student is, is we get a grant called Supplemental and Concentration, and that money goes towards students that are either English language learners, foster youth, or who receive free and reduced meals. So what it means by being unduplicated is that the student can only be one of those three things, only counted once. So even if they are receiving free and reduced meals and also an English language learner or, and also a foster youth, we can only count them once. So that taxes the grant, because many of these children, of these students that fall into one of these three categories also fall into some of the other categories. So it is some money, but we have restrictions, and I just wanted to explain for anybody that might not understand what unduplicated student means, that that's what that is, so that we better understand that.
And that thirty-five student reduction relates to approximately how many less dollars we will receive?
So if we talk about ten thousand, just briefly, if we including the potential category program, so it's probably three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So hopefully, the cost we spend on those eleven special kids were exceeding, board know that there's, that's possibility, because depend on the area of the student's disability. So hopefully, that will extend, non-public school, the cost can be high. So hopefully, they can offset. But as I reported to the board, the thirty-five fewer students present zero point six four percent decline enrollment. That percentage is the lowest in the last several years. So that's definitely good news, and also the good news, the board know that our kindergarten, our elementary school, middle school, our enrollment's increased. So which mean that those kids, when they progressing, as far as our, the kindergarten would attract more students, which mean that there's a potential our enrollment will be increased. So we're very hopeful.
And as a matter of fact, you would say thirty-five fewer students, well, our student-to-teacher ratio is fairly close to that, and so then we would need one less teacher. But the thirty-five is scattered out all over all sites and all grade levels, so it doesn't really relate to one less teacher.
That's correct.
So the budget goes down, but our staffing need doesn't necessarily go down.
I have a question. For a number of years, we used six thousand, and now I just heard ten thousand. When did we add the other four to the average cost that we got for a student?
So the state-
I was unaware of this.
Yeah, so the, under the local control funding formula, the, this, actually, the funding is called grade spend adjustment, which mean that K to three has one funding per ADA, four, five, one funding, and, and the nine to ten, the one funding, they add on the class size reduction, add on the career tech money. So in order for board to understand, I just use the average. The other thing, every year, the state give us COLA. So when you have a COLA, then per student dollar funding is increased every year.
And Ms. Wu, just to clarify, in addition to the COLA, which increases the funds, we in this district take into consideration also the supplemental concentration grant funds as well, which is over the base. So six thousand may be the base, and in addition to that are some of the supplemental concentration grant funds, and I am guessing you're also adding some of the categorical funds.
That's correct. Yeah. So it's just easy for people to understand, remember, so if you want to-
Well, if I don't understand it, I can't have a hope for the audience to understand it.
Yeah.
And we've, we've had, we have used six thousand dollars as a measuring stick for so long that it's just become the standard of which we measure. And then I just hear four thousand dollars more than we've used for a measuring, and then that just opens up all sorts of floodgates to questions that I would have.
Um, I will-
So I like to know, which is it? Is it ten, or is it six? Because that's a big difference.
I will definitely provide actual number in this week's update.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And I just, I'm sorry, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, you said there was increased enrollment, was that TK in kindergarten? Is that what?
The increased enrollment is elementary school level and the middle school level.
Elementary school level, so it wasn't specific to any grade or anything?
Yeah, I can have this information for you, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Connie, I'm sorry I didn't have this question for you earlier. If you don't have the answer for it, feel free to get it to us at a later time. But you were just mentioning that the grants are different K through three, four through eight.
Four, yeah, four and a, four and a five, and, and the six to eight, and the nine to ten, uh, nine to twelve.
Does that, and that's from the state?
That is for the base grant. It's for the local control funding formula.
And does that, is that based on, K through three, is that based on class size, or does class size have a, an impact on that?
Um, yes, because the state gave us a base, okay? The, the, every part school in California, K to school, uh, K to three have a base, then add on the class size. So, so that is K to three. Then the four to five, six to eight, for the nine to twelve have a base, then add on the, the CTE career tech money.
So there's a base-
Yes.
And then in each category, it gets added on to if we meet different requirements?
That's correct.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Thanks so much for preparing this. Not as bad a news as we've had in some years, so thanks for that, too. Moving on to consent agenda. Are there any changes to consent agenda? All right, then, could I have a motion?
Move consent.
Second.
Ms. Help, please take the vote.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board president Gililand?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, then we'll move to the action items. Item one is Paxton Patterson Learning System Purchase. Dr. Kaiser.
Yes, we're very excited about this. Board president Gililand and board. The Board of Education has requested to approve the purchase of a Paxton Patterson Learning System for Santa Fe Computer Science Magnet School. As part of the development of the college and career readiness skills, the Paxton Patterson Learning System comprised of college and career-ready lab, Paxton Content Learning Management System, and the professional development. These are focused on creating career experiences that help students decide where their interest and aptitudes align with career pathways. To that end, in making a decision about this lab, Santa Fe Middle School personnel have gone to visit some Paxton Patterson labs, and then to make the final selection, Dr. Riel and Anthony Carlson from the high school went to visit a lab to analyze the modules to ensure that they're aligned to what we're teaching at the high school in the career pathways. So this will create a seamless path for students that have those interests in that pathway experience to go from Santa Fe into those, those courses at the high school. These are exploratory modules where students work side-by-side in pairs in little modules with things such as sports medicine, advanced applied technologies. They're doing communications, transportation, and digital media and entertainment. The modules have been selected, they're ready to be ordered and purchased, and we'd like the installation to be done in time for students to enroll in these elective courses by second semester as part of their elective at the Computer Science Magnet School. This is being funded out of our Title IV plan. It's part of, it was written into our LCAP that was approved last year, and also from supplemental and concentration funds that are site funds that are being dedicated to this.
I would ask when, if this passes here in a minute, that we find out when it is up and running, I would very much like to see this.
We would love to have an open house for you and for parents and for people to come and see. It will really be quite a spectacle in our district.
I appreciate that thought, because, once again today, I heard the old, 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 old antique story. One of the parents was saying, oh, yeah, I, I put my child in Santa Fe, but I understand that Clifton is the better school. And that is such an old story that is no longer true, and both Clifton and Santa Fe have their strengths, and this will just continue to increase the offerings at, at Santa Fe, and, and the parity is there. The old story that one is better than the other is no longer accurate, and it will just be another opportunity to showcase the fact that, that Santa Fe just gets better and better. So thanks for that thought. Are there other questions or comments?
Dr. Kaiser, you and I were speaking earlier today at the Village Lights Out Assembly today, and, and she wouldn't stop talking to me about this. You were very excited about it, and I was wondering if you wouldn't mind sharing the response about the question that I had about how long the course was and how that, how, how those courses fold together, because I think that's very important information.
Right now, at, at Santa Fe Middle School, we have a teacher that has a computer science degree, and he's teaching advanced coding right now to the students that come to him along with some other computer applications. This, right now, is going to be a one semester-long course where students will be enrolled the first semester in the coding class, and then they'll go into this cour, these modules, which is one course. The modules last for about two weeks. And so with the number of modules that will be installed in the classroom, there are too many modules for a student to even do in one semester, but they'll go through the modules, doing their selections of explorations during that time. And one of the images that stuck in my mind through some of the research that I had done is they actually have a veterinarian module for middle school students. And I was looking at the pictures, I thought, well, you know, is that a dog that these kids are operating on? No, it's a stuffed animal that has been specially designed for them to have those pre-veterinary experiences with a mannequin dog. You know, looking at the inside of the dog that way, and then it's an applied technology. There are computer technology modules that go along with it. So the things that they're learning on the computer, this is applied to how it's, exactly how it's applied in the fields, in the scientific fields especially.
If parents are interested, you can actually download the Paxton Patterson on YouTube and look at how classrooms function, so you can see how it happens in the world.
There are no board children in these classrooms.
All right, other comments? Thank you so much, Dr. Kaiser. Appreciate that report, and looking forward to that open house. Item three, affiliation agreement with-
Hey, Ed.
Yep.
Want to vote? Should we do it?
You really want to vote on this?
You know, I, I'll take a stab at it. I'll move to-
I will need a motion then.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Help, please take the vote that Mr. Hammond wants.
Board member Travanti?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Okay.
Board member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board president Gililand?
Yes, I was afraid you were going to say, you wanted to vote no. Thank you for reminding me. All right, affiliation agreement with University of Nevada, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, board president Gililand, members of the board, Dr. Torosian, cabinet in the community. The Board of Education has requested to approve an agreement allowing the Monrovia Unified School District to participate in the clinical training of the University of Nevada Reno School of Medicine, students in the field of speech, language, pathology, and audiology. This agreement creates a partnership between the University of Nevada School of Medicine and the Monrovia Unified School District to develop and train speech-language pathologists and audiologists. This position, these positions are niche-based positions whereby individuals majoring in this field must be communications. majoring, um, in this field must be communications, um, majors as undergraduates. There are no direct costs to the district.
Ms. Lockerbie? Did you have a question?
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but are they really coming from Nevada?
These are sat- satellite schools. So, it's like Grand Canyon University.
Other questions or comments? Let's vote on this one, too. Could I have a motion?
Sure. Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Hough, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item four is an affiliation agreement with New York University Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Development. Dr. Jackson?
Board President Gilliland, members of the board, Dr. Therosian, Cabinet. The Board of Education has requested to approve an agreement allowing the Monrovia Unified School District to participate in the clinical training of New York University Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Development students in the field of speech and language pathology. This agreement creates a partnership between NYU Steinhardt School of Culture, Education, and Human Development and the Monrovia Unified School District to develop and train speech-language pathologists. We continue our outreach. Um, these students are here in the Southern California area and not in New York. There is no direct cost to the district.
Any comments or questions? Let's just make one comment. The breadth and the, the depth of some of the agreements we have with higher learning institutions is just amazing. Uh, could I have a motion, please? So, move.
Second.
Okay.
We're just on top of this one here.
The board moves and the board second.
I think Maritza got it first.
All right, you got it, Ms. Hough? All right, then, please take the vote.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
All right. Item seven is board discussion of retroactive and honorary diplomas. Uh, Dr. Therosian, we want to kick this off.
Certainly, President Gilliland, members of the board. We are in the process of reviewing our, um, our graduation requirements and policy to update our board policy. Uh, our board policy currently addresses not just our, uh, regular graduation requirements and, but also retroactive, uh, graduation requirements. Uh, there is also an opportunity, as we look in, uh, to, uh, update our policy, to add honorary diplomas as a possibility. Is that an area in which the board is interested as we go through and update, uh, our policy? And if so, uh, I can draft some of the parameters, perhaps, of, uh, the diploma of an honorary diploma, uh, similar to, uh, what is, uh, offered in some of our higher institutions of higher learning.
I, I think one of, one of the issues here, certainly, if you've reviewed the policy, we, we need to update it, because it still talks about case that California's.
High school.
High school ed, uh.
Exit exam.
Exit exam. And so, we need to clean up the language. But also, we've had a request for a, a diploma. We had a wonderful ceremony for a, for a gentleman, uh, three years ago that had, had to cut his education short because of the war. And, and it, it was right there within Ed Code and within our policy that we had the authority to do that. Um, the, the request that we have before us, we have received now is, is not allowable under our policy. Uh, because that policy only allows us to offer the diploma to the, to the students that curtail their education to go into the military and served in the military. But certainly, the, families were impacted, too, because if the men all left to go to war, uh, people had to go to work. And so, there were those that had to curtail their education so that they could go to work. Well, children, um, is, is why it said to people. Some of the children actually had to go to work. And so, curtail their education. And, and I personally think that it would behoove us to have an honorary diploma that we could grant, grant to, uh, people in that situation. Now, uh, Ed Code doesn't have any provision for those, those that curtailed to support family and the other needs during those events. So, uh, I think we need to do everything we can to explore what authorities we do have to grant some kind of an honorary diploma in those cases. And, and, and make this, update of this policy a priority.
If, and, and I don't disagree. The, the only issue that I have is the paper that we're giving, is it ceremonial or does it have substance to it? Because the one that's allowed by Ed Code is, it's a legit diploma.
That's right.
And the one that, this sounds more like it's a certificate. Is that correct? It's, I'm understanding.
An honorary diploma would be similar to what they offer to politicians that come and speak at their graduation in, in colleges. You didn't come to school here, but certainly, your public service, uh, exemplifies what it means to be a graduate. But Ed Code doesn't, everything we can find out is Ed Code doesn't grant us the authority to give a full diploma without two hundred and twenty credits. You have to either challenge or make up that, unless you were a veteran.
Right.
So, the person that's not a veteran doesn't come under those provisions of Ed Code.
Even though they were affected by the war.
Exactly. So, to give a full diploma with everything that means, apparently, isn't within our authority.
Uh, but, yeah, I, because you don't want to dilute the, the diploma that you've.
Right.
Are giving out. I, I understand that.
Exactly.
Um, yeah, I, but if we're thinking that there's somebody in our, and I'm going to build on your scenario, that kids, the, the, the adult males left, which caused other people in the family that they had to pull together to keep the house afloat while they were gone, well, they're no less serving our country than the people who are gone. And that was the whole basis of the Blue Star families, is that it's, it's, it's the support for the people who are gone that they're being honored as well. It's families. And so, when, we did this in two thousand and two, I mean, eventually, the, the folks who left from military service in two thousand and two will be very old one day. They're just young today. But they'll all be there at one time. And if we want to look back, or the, the board has a mechanism to look back and say, you know, you had to go to work because three of the people in your house, while it was volunteer, you still did it, I'm all for that, to say, yeah, well, here's, here's your honorary Monrovia diploma. I, I don't see a problem with that at all.
As meaningful as we can make that diploma.
Right. I mean, it's probably presented by the board or something, and.
Is there anything that we can do to make it?
Well, you know, we make resolution stuff, and we do all that stuff all the time.
So, Ed Code says that we can't if they haven't satisfied.
No, I think they said.
We can't give them a fully accredited diploma from Monrovia High School unless they meet specific graduation requirements.
They can't test out?
Or, or they either had, they either have to have two hundred and twenty credits, passing grades, and all those things that go with it, unless they were a veteran that curtailed their.
There was a gentleman three years ago, who we, we gave him his diploma in June, just before we had high school, uh, the high school ceremony. And it was allowed, he, and that was like nineteen forty-four, I think, when he left.
Forty-four, I believe, when he left, yeah.
And so, here, he came back home, he's lived here his whole life. And so, we gave it to him, his full-on diploma, that he would have gotten had he just been in school. And, um, it was really cool that we did that. Very cool.
One of our best days on the boards, right?
A hundred percent.
But he qualified under Ed Code because he was a veteran.
Right. But if, if we're saying here, we're going to take care of our own regardless of what Ed Code says, we're not going to give you the full-weighted, um, diploma that you, you don't have, but we give you something that says that we recognize the service that you provided, and we're really proud you're in our community.
Absolutely.
I don't see a problem with that at all. That, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody agree with that?
I agree. A hundred percent.
Celine, you on board with that?
Yes.
All right, so we.
I, I, I only meant to say, Celine, is you missed a really good day that day.
Oh, you did.
It, it, it was something else. And he was the, at, at graduation that night, he was the first person's name who was read off. And he couldn't make it. His health would not allow him to be able to go to the ceremony. But his name was the first one read that night as a graduate. It was very cool.
Absolutely. All right, so I guess, uh, you, you have the board's will in this, Dr. T? So, if you would change our policy, uh, bring us a draft as soon as we can.
As we update the, the policy, I will bring that to you and, uh, move forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So, do we have to vote on that?
No.
We don't have to vote on that.
We will have to vote on the policy when it comes forward.
Okay.
But what, we just wanted to get the sense of what the board would like in that policy. If there's other changes you see when you look at that board policy on, on, uh, graduation, uh, please let Dr. Therosian know. All right, moving on to pending board issues. Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Gilliland, members of the board. I'd like to mention that, uh, one of the updates we can provide today is, uh, about safety. And we had last week the California Shakeout. Uh, and Dr. Jar-, uh, Dr. Jackson is going to tell us a little bit about the Great American Shakeout.
Yes, Dr. Therosian, Board President Gilliland, members of the board. Uh, on October seventeenth, at ten seventeen AM, MUSD participated in, uh, the Great Shakeout. And this opportunity allowed our staff and students time to educate themselves on how they might protect themselves during an earthquake. Um, all of our sites participated in practicing the duck, cover, and hold. And then, several of our other sites conducted an extensive and comprehensive exercise that included search and rescue, um, damage threat assessment, triage, uh, recovery and support. And all sites were in communication with our, uh, command center that was here, located at, uh, the district office. So, um, a thank you to all of our staff members for taking part in this earthquake preparedness drill in support of our, uh, students and the community we serve. And then, a special thank you to our district safety committee for coordinating this effort with the sites.
In addition, uh, thank you, Dr. Jackson. Uh, in addition, I will, do want to call attention to the boardwalk dates. These will need to be revised again.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't going to call you out, President Gilliland. What I was going to call attention to was.
I had to change the schedules, and one of the dates fell in it, so.
On, on March fifth, I, we have been invited to, or we will be invited to Sacramento for the, for the Schools to Watch program because of the, uh, redesignation. And that, uh, ceremony or lunch is on March fifth. Now, we don't have our, uh, invitation yet, but it would.
My flu will no less be, um, in full forest at that time. I'm, and, and, oh, yeah, it, on me, on March the fifth.
On, on the fifth, I understand.
It will zene it right on the fifth.
So, the boardwalk that we have scheduled at.
Mayflower.
Mayflower on the fifth is not happening on the fifth?
Uh, unless none of the board members will be going to.
So, delete that from my calendar?
We're going to hang on to it. There may need to be a revision. My guess is, uh, at least one board member would want to go up to Sacramento to be, uh, part of the lunch. Those who are in good health.
I will mention.
I'm not going to Disneyland, though.
Quarantine.
Um, this might change your mind, but, um, I was there at Clifton, um, when the presentation was made, and they're revamping that program and including a whole legislative piece in the afternoon. Uh, well, I mean, it's good information, good updates, good, so you might want to change your mind.
Good times just don't stop, do they?
Thought I'd mention that.
And finally, while I will provide some more, uh, information about, uh, legislation, I, and at the state level, I do know that, uh, the full and fair funding will be on the ballot, uh, in 2020. I suspect there are some other ramifications and some, perhaps even competing bills that will be on there. Yes, shocking.
Shocking.
But, uh, a full report is what I will prepare for next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, old business. Our next two board meetings are November the thirteenth, which is a joint meeting with the Personnel Commission, and December eleventh will be our annual organization and regular board meeting. Uh, there are other dates calendared under new business in the agenda, so you feel free to look at that. I would like to point out that November first is a pupil-free day, so, uh, be careful with the traffic, because their kids will be out of school that day. Uh, any other comments or thoughts? All right, then, I would like to adjourn, uh, the regular Board of Education Open Session Meeting in honor of two individuals. First, Adele Cornell, former MUSD teacher. Adele worked for MUSD for twenty-six ye- years, both as a teacher at Brad Oaks and program advisor at both Monroe and Clifton. Adele passed away recently from a long battle with cancer. Her family is pla- planning a celebration of life, and details will be forthcoming. Secondly, Debbie Bland Lawrence, sister of MUSD mechanic Ronald Farrar, passed away recently at the age of sixty-four from a long battle with cancer. Service arrangements for Debbie will also be forthcoming. Our thoughts and prayers are with both the families at this time. We'll adjourn at eight thirty-six. All right.